I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, roll call please.
Burgess. Nelson.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Walden.
Here.
All right, up next we need a motion to approve the minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty two.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? Same none, roll call please.
Walden. Sullivan.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Up next we got the motion to approve the payment of bills as they appear on the warrant sheets. Need a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Same none, roll call please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
All right, up next, uh, public comments on any agenda items. Anything? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to communications from the mayor. Uh, I got a few things, but not too many. Um, just wanted to remind everybody, uh, the town cleanup is, uh, Sunday, October the ninth, a meeting at the library. We'll kind of disperse from there. Um, don't really know where we're going. Uh, Abby did kind of mention about hitting various places, especially if there's little kids coming. Um, also, um, uh, October nineteenth Congressman Davis is coming to, uh, assumption, he'll only be here between ten and ten thirty. Just to kind of, he's doing a district-wide tour of, um, all the projects that he has helped with. So he's just coming to, uh, kind of promote and talk about that. Um, so we're gonna meet at the, uh, water plant. Um, and then also, um, was kind of asked to say, instead of finance, uh, just kind of be mindful, um, some people have been complaining about the animal waste at the railroad park. Um, ACPA has put up, uh, garbage cans and, um, so it would be appreciative if everybody could, uh, community could use those when they're out there. Um, and then also, uh, there's some, it's a bit of some good news, uh, we're having some expansion. Um, I just signed a thirty thousand, uh, well, a building permit for a thirty thousand dollar shed out of Salons. And then also, uh, Kel Brothers is expanding. Um, you know, they bought the, uh, building off of Illinois Street where Alan Wellington, uh, had his shed. And, um, they're basically going to be closing their facility in Maroa and moving the jobs down here over the course of the next, uh, year. So we're looking at about fourteen full-time jobs. Um, it'd be about a seven hundred thousand dollar expansion of their business, so it'll be here to assumption. So we're kind of working on some things with TIP, we're gonna have that maybe, uh, end of this month for finance. Um, kind of just go from there on that. And that is really all that I have. On it, so, uh... So, Attorney.
Attorney, City Attorney. All right, thank you Mayor. Um, first up, uh, on the ongoing litigation with Mr. Shihada. Um, it just is an update, we filed a motion to dismiss the most recent complaint, uh, against the, the city. He has until Friday to respond. Um, I have, usually is quick about responses, so I don't know if he's busy with his other suits. Uh, but once, once Friday hits, we'll be able to set that motion for hearing, uh, and hopefully get that case dismissed against us. I don't believe it has merit. Um, so hopefully getting that kind of wrapped up soon. Um, the, the two properties that we have on Saint John and East Illinois, uh, we received the deeds for those back, so the city is the title owner. Um, we're, we're working with the assessor's office to make sure that those receive tax exempt status, um, before we finally close on the, uh, on the, the, uh, East Illinois property. Uh, we also received...
What, what, oh, you said East Illinois?
East Illinois, we received a...
Okay, okay. So you, Saint John's making a tenure with?
Yes, yes, yeah, we're, so, uh, we just want to clear that up because when, when we met with, uh, uh, Ms. Wellington, um, she wanted to make sure everything, uh, was squared away, and so I want to have a file of P-Tax three hundred as well before, uh, we close with her. But we, we do own, own both of those properties. Um, so, uh, when we received the, uh, appraisal for the Saint John property, so we're, later on today, we're going to, uh, we're gonna be moving to allow for, for bids to go, and you should have that, um, in your package. Um, other than that, it's been, it's been pretty quiet, uh, which is, which is always a good thing when Derek doesn't have to call me. Um, so, uh, in, in this final note, you probably, um, receiving your packets, uh, note that I am leaving private practice of law, um, at, uh, on November twenty first. I'm taking a general counsel position, um, with a place that's confidential until, uh, next Wednesday. So, um, swirling, uh, is working on a transition plan, and I'm gonna meet with, with Derek and Janet to make sure they continue to receive the, uh, representation that you have been receiving, hopefully better representation than you've been receiving.
You gotta set the bar pretty high.
Um, uh... On, on a personal note, if you...
Yeah, no, no, it take a little time, so, yeah.
It's a really hard decision, and, um, an assumption played a role in making that decision difficult. Uh, when, when Derek called me almost a year ago through the day, um, I remember he was, he was on the, he was on my speakerphone, and I was Googling where Assumption was. Uh, I had heard about it a few times and knew kinds of, it was out of Taylorville's way, but, um, didn't know anything else about this community. And, uh, you guys have made a, a big impression in, in just a year. Um, I love coming to these meetings, you're all, you're all very kind. Um, there's always a story, uh, that, that, that I have that Annie and I talk about, leaving these meetings or, you know, just learning about, uh, what was it, uh, roof, uh, festro, um, learning that that, that existed, uh...
And the goat that escaped.
The goat that escaped, uh, these are all, uh, these are all funny, funny things, uh. Chief being undercover because he grew a beard like the first meeting and people being like, oh, that's why he had a beard. Those types of things make a community special, and even though I've, I've been here in such a sh- it's been a short time, you guys are special. And Assumption will always, it'll be dear to my heart just because some meetings and other community, other communities just aren't like this place. So, uh, you guys have a special thing going. Um, I'm, I'm really glad that Derek called, and I'm glad that I got to be a part of this community, um, and I'm sad that it, that it's ending so soon. Um, but hopefully, um, hopefully you all stay in touch. Uh, I know, um, my dad and I still come out, come out to the brewery, and, uh, I'll probably bring Annie out to, to Assumption Fest too. So you'll, you'll always be on my radar, and, uh, thank you for the privilege of allowing me to represent you for this past year. Thank you.
And then also, um, so I've had a break, it's, you know, him and his wife are gonna be having a baby soon, so we went and we got you a gift and, uh...
Yeah, open it.
If you want to, sure.
It's always great when you quit and then you have to do this.
Ah, yeah.
Wishing you a world of happy ever after, and your little one congratulated.
And then we all went around and signed it.
Thank you all very much.
Yes.
Oh my goodness. Wow. That is fantastic. Tell me a story, tuck me inside. Oh, say a little prayer, just make good night. Who sued this? Oh, really? That is amazing. Thank you so much, that's...
You wanna reconsider now, leave it?
No. Wow. Thank you. What an attorney's report. It was an emotional one, you guys.
Well, I could tell that something was wrong when he called me, left me a message, and it's like, okay, he didn't really say, and it's like, I don't know if something happened, you know, or are we being sued? Like, even worse than what we already are on some of this stuff, and it's like, I didn't know, and so then he called, called me, I was like, oh, man. But, you know, I, I totally get it, and, uh, well, I, I do, you know, I, I, you know, it's, that was like, this is in politics too, and, um, I think you'd be going to a great firm, uh, but, and it certainly is a great firm. I mean, they had a great reputation in Springfield, that's why I, I wanted to go with them when I became mayor. And I know they'll keep up the, uh, the same good reputation that Greg has brought to us, so...
If there was a way I could keep this client under the table, like...
That's what I told Jane, it's like, if you're going into private practice on the side, well, just, you know, I...
I wish, but I think that'd be...
I know, that's not good, but, yeah. All right, yes, thank you, you're welcome. Alrighty, uh, Treasure.
Um, the only thing I have is where we, we have a, um, our wastewater project, the, the water revolving fund. Loan will be due November the sixth for, uh, sixty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. I have to do it online.
Oh, okay.
All payments are gonna be online, so you won't see anything, you won't see a check, uh, to prove that, which obviously started in Peru.
Yes.
And then our next payment will not be due until May the sixth of twenty twenty-three.
That's...
And that'd be roughly around seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, just kind of let, let you guys know that we have a payment coming up on November the sixth.
Perfect. Alrighty, over, persons.
I just have one.
You go ahead, Gary.
I was actually gonna talk about the cleanup thing, so that, uh, it is a two, that's what...
Two, yes.
Um, I did reach out to Kimr today.
Okay.
And, uh, left a message with their activity director, letting them know the date and time, so they, if they want to bring some of the kids out, they could.
Perfect.
What was that?
Um, I, uh, Luann Pearl, I think was her name, she asked me what was going to be done with the Gray House, I don't know the address, Virginia Jones's house. She asked what was gonna be done with that, and the dollars...
Well, okay, so, the public part is, is that the back taxes, a company came in and bought the back taxes.
A company?
So, and, um, there is somebody in town that is going to buy it. But they, they're, they have to wait until the judgment is done on November first, uh, that's where they go to court. And so once that happens, I know that this person is going to reach out to this company and buy it. They're on a list, is what she told me, to, to buy it, but that's the plan, and this person told me she's going to tear it down.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, she, she said she's tearing it down.
Okay.
She had asked me if I had wanted anything to do with it, and I said no, given that I'm the neighbor, but I said no, I don't, I don't want anything to do with it.
I will get back with, uh, Luann and then...
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Greg, have you heard anything from that tech company that was here for the fest that tore everything up?
No, so we have a contract, uh, I, I have the contract, but I've not heard anything further after reaching out to them about making corrections. Is it still a mess out there?
Uh, nothing's been done as far as I know.
Yeah, we were waiting to hear back from, that was the last thing at the meeting, we were waiting to hear back.
Because, you know, Dana said she would repair it, but, I mean, after all, this company is the one that poured out.
Tore it up, yeah.
So I don't think that that's fair to Dana, have to have to, you know, no mess, I don't want them doing it either. We need to get, they need to pay for somebody professional to have to do it.
Yeah.
They're the ones that destroyed that company.
I've had some interactions with that company before, um, so we'll, I'll, I'll talk to Derek and see if it's something we want to apply to, or... Give them one more chance to respond to us, see what they want to do.
Okay.
But I don't want them doing the work.
Yeah.
Obviously...
Yeah, it did.
A can of spray foam is not fixing it, right?
No. I mean, quite honestly, if you want to, I mean, did you already send him a letter?
Mm-hmm.
They probably...
I mean, okay, how long, how long does a letter have?
I mean, it's like, what, thirty days?
They have, they have, if I had to be fun...
They've had seven, seven days, so take, at least call me.
Oh, yeah.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, follow up with them, yeah, I mean, we'll do, because we gotta get it done.
Yeah.
You know, gotta be best.
I'll just, I'll just call them.
Yeah, just call them and be threatening. All right, uh, see... Anything, Jane? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to, uh, new business. Uh, just need a, plan is this year for, uh, trick or treat, we're gonna have trunk or treat, it's gonna be held at the, uh, football field, uh, with the Suction Community Pride doing it, um, it would be from two, is it four to six, Selena?
Twenty.
No, but trunk or treat.
Trunk or treat is, uh...
Four to six, yes, out there, uh, that'll be on October thirtieth, and, uh, then we'll have trick or treat on October thirtieth and thirty-first from five to eight. So we just need a motion to approve trick or treating hours from October thirtieth to the thirty-first from five to eight.
I think you could be on the motion.
One second.
Any discussion? Same none, roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yeah.
All right, uh, next we got the motion to allow the closing of, uh, West Second Street in front of the Naughty Pine on October fifteenth for Oktoberfest. Uh, Renee reached out to me, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, they're gonna be holding Oktoberfest in front of the, uh, Naughty Pine. She just asked that we close the street down for him, we've done it before, before they set up some bags, uh, do some games, so...
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Same none, roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, up next we have motion, uh, motion to approve the resolution for the TIP application for one thirty-three South Chestnut Street. This will be resolution number twenty twenty-two dash six, this is for, uh, Andrew Barnes. Uh, we had approved giving him, uh, the, uh, the tip, now it's just finalizing it into a resolution form.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, uh, twenty twenty-two dash six. See, you need to make the motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, uh, next we have the motion to approve to allow bids for three fifteen North Saint John Street. This piece of property has been a thorn in the mane of the city's side since really early, nearly two thousands. I mean, I was going through some paperwork and saw it then. So we finally have the deed, we have everything, and now we're just gonna be putting it up for bid. So, and in the past, we've put it, posted it on the newspaper and on Facebook, and, um, we ran for like two weeks. And then at the, uh, November council meeting, we will open the bids up and sell it to, uh, whoever bided the highest.
Was there an appraisal done on it?
There was, yes. So this one right here, Bruce Cannon. Uh, the appraisal actually came back, uh, that the, the opinion of value is three thousand dollars. And we would always have, it has to be eighty percent, right?
Eighty percent.
So we cannot accept anything less than eighty percent of that value when the bids are open.
The total appraisal was three thousand?
Yes.
Where does that show that?
Uh, it's right here on the second page.
On the second page.
On this page, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I was looking at the first page. Now, will that go on our website also?
So what happens if we don't get the eighty, do you just...
We just do it again, don't we?
You can do it again, or you can authorize staff to just market it and try to sell it.
Come on, that's...
We would have to, uh, declare a surplus property, which is a second motion.
Okay.
But i- if, if we don't get a bid for the eighty percent, well, that's what we can do.
Okay.
Does the sale have to be minimum?
Eighty percent.
So we would have to be also eighty?
I think we'll get at least that, I mean, it's a good corner of lot.
I'm surprised it's only three thousand dollars, I figured it could be higher than that.
Yeah. All right, can we have a second for this?
Okay.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I thought somebody, okay, so you wanna first then? Yeah, we make the motion.
Okay.
Any, any discussion? Okay. Roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
All right, up next is we have a motion to approve, uh, the bid for the concession stand, this is me repairing the roof. Uh, we got a, uh, bid for, the lowest bid was four thousand dollars, that'd be a done, uh, when, uh, Derek went and got it through Streets, uh, for Jay Hadley to go ahead and do the work, uh, he'll be basically starting the work as soon as we tell him, I mean, basically, let you guys approve it.
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Second. Roll call please.
Walden.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Nelson. Nelson.
Yes, sure.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Burgess.
No.
All right, up next we have a motion to approve the concrete bid for sidewalk work on Chestnut Street for ten thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, this is from R and B Peters Construction, uh, this will basically, they'll be redoing the sidewalk in front of nineteen oh five. So, where we, and where we redid it, uh, last year, at the, it'd be where their, um, secondary room used to be the old apartment, all the way down through in front of nineteen oh five to where Jack's building is. Yes, they're fixing all that up. Brad's making our way down Main Street, so, um, R and B Peters out of Taylorville, uh, was the best one, and they can start on this ASAP too. So we see the motion to approve it for, uh, sidewalk work on Chestnut Street for ten thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Burgess.
No.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
All right, up next we have a motion to approve the John Deere ten twenty-five bar for nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Uh, this is actually, we're gonna be trading in our, um, tractor that we already have, um, the ten twenty... What we're doing is that we're trading in one of the tractors that we have that is eighteen years old that we use to plow downtown, the snow, um, and we're just basically upgrading to get this tractor, um, we're getting a thirty-five hundred dollar trade-in allowance from the old tractor. So it's a pretty good benefit, but it'll be for ten thousand nine hundred dollars. This will be paid out of the capital line item that is in Darren's budget for streets. Do you have any motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Good.
Burgess.
Does this have a lot of extras, like the other tractor just not have it?
It's quite bigger.
Yeah.
I, I mean, there, I mean, there's, uh, availability for attachments to be, to be put on it, um, that other machine, which is, it, once we got more than a couple of inches of snow, it would just bottom out. The, the main purpose for it is for pushing snow.
Yes, and, uh, there's, and they push those off for downtown area and then out to GSI in that area as well. And, uh, we did talk about, just so you know, about a cab, it is way too expensive, so we, no, we're not gonna do that. All right, up next, motion to approve Petersburg plumbing to disconnect and tie back to the existing stormwater for seventeen thousand. This is for Salons. Um, it's kind of a Band-Aid, you know, for right now, but we hope that it does kind of fix some of the problems that people off of, um, Illinois Street, uh, is having. Um, we plan on, no more than four days worth of work, right, maybe at least three?
So that's what the seventeen thousand is, they're gonna do it for timing materials, and they said budget for four days, and then before four days.
Yeah.
Where are they gonna be this year?
Uh, right on, right there on Second Street where that white picket fence is, where they set those two new manholes, on Second Street on the east side town. Right where that first alley is by the pantry, right there, right in that little bollard.
We have a motion to approve it.
I'll make that first.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yeah.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
All right, up next, a motion to release the retentive for sanitary sewer phase one, this is basically releasing the money that we have to finish paying off everything for sewer phase one. Is that pretty well correct, Mark?
That's correct, yeah.
Alrighty.
I'll make that motion.
Perfect, you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call please.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, up next, motion for dispersment for verdicts, uh, for one hundred thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents for the lawnmower project.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Sullivan.
All right, up next we have a motion for dispersment for verdict for lead and for ten thousand three hundred one dollars and seventy-six cents. Perfect, roll call please, Jane?
Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Walden.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
All right, up next, discussion and action is necessary regarding the retention ponds, uh, Donnie has some information on that, I know he's talked to you, kind of where you think that we should go with this, um, I know we talked about how the fire department do it, but now we're kind of looking at not.
Yeah, I mean, um, Alan Wimpen and also, uh, one of the guys that kind of handles a lot of the yard, uh, work and whatnot there at GSI, kind of said those cattails are so thick that it probably isn't worth going through there and trying to get the fire department, trying to get that lined out, and, uh, basically said we probably just need to go in there and dig it out. And Alan Wimpen did say that he would, um, if we would rent the equipment to dig it out and have the, the trucks be able to haul dirt away, that he would supply one of the head guys, um, no charge to the city to run that and do that, so...
Do you want to get the information to...
I mean, that's, you know, that's up to the city, I talked to a couple, um, owner, operator, contractor, uh, guys that own their own equipment. They, uh, they're the ones that said, you know, we'd like to have it burned off first and then, because it's gonna be wet down there. They're gonna see what kind of equipment they could get down there, but they're confident that they can do it, it's up to the city. I mean, it's six in one, half dozen in the other, if we rent the equipment and have them operate it, or if we subcontract it out, or contract it out to somebody, I don't, it doesn't bother me either way, I think it'll accomplish the same goal.
We don't?
How many...
Yeah, I don't think that would be, I mean, you know, it takes, I, well, we have plenty of room.
Yeah.
To do it, so...
I was wondering, time-wise, I mean...
Yeah, because we've got two small dump trucks.
Can, can we put the dirt on the, on the berm?
Mm-hmm.
At the range?
Oh.
Because I've got a guy that I talked to today that'll move it for us for free.
You won't want that out there, it's gonna be slop.
But it, it'll be good, won't it?
I mean, it's gonna be like runny, I mean, maybe once they, once it dries out and stuff, someone will come back and push it up. But if we're gonna build that berm pileup, okay, sewer face too, we're gonna pull so much clay out of there, or you want to move it ASAP?
No, I mean, clay's good for...
Oh, yeah, that's what, we want, yeah, this is gonna be slop, this is gonna be bad.
Is it that wet in there right now?
Yeah, it's, I mean, you can wait for it to freeze.
I was out there.
No, so it's, you could probably walk across it and not feel anything with these root tail, or these cattails, the root balls, you know, go down a couple feet, and they just hold moisture in them.
Okay, because, I mean, we, I walked out there with that one, like, in middle of August, and it looked dry.
It looks dry. It just stays, I mean, it probably, you know, you go two months without any rain at all, yeah, it might dry out. Um, we're not in that situation now.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, like I said, I think it's six, you know, the only, I guess, advantage of having us just rent the equipment and have them do the work is that, you know, they're doing the work for themselves. They can't really come back and say, you know, it wasn't done correctly or properly, but.
Donnie, what did Alan prefer? Did he have a preference?
What I, what he, what I just, uh, proposed is what he told me personally is what he would like to see done.
I'm fine with that. I mean, it, it needed to be taken care of all along, and we can't let it hit like this again, so.
And I, and I kinda agree with Jack too, and if we have those, have them do it, then they can do it the way they, they want to, and then. It's down on that, we just supply the machines and the dump trucks.
Do we know, uh, the reason why we took ownership of that pond in the first place?
Oh, geez, no. I mean, it's been, for as long, I've been on council, we've owned it. I really don't know.
Is that the idea, Mark?
It's been a long time, yeah. I mean, it was, I think there was, so there was an economic grant that was for GSI, and I, and I wonder if it was tied to that, that, you know, because there was, you know, some storm sewer that was put in with GSI. Um, you know, that'd be my only thoughts as to why you were forced to take it, I guess, but I don't know that for, I, I, we did have to go back and look. That was many years ago, so.
Yeah, I can pursue it however council wants to.
Yeah, so you wanna go ahead and, but do you wanna get a quote for us to rent something?
Sure.
And, uh, run it through, everything?
And there's, I mean, there's a few, uh, pieces of equipment in town, if you'd like to go that route, or we can, you know, talk to like a Martin.
Does Holt House have something that you can use out there?
Yeah.
I think he's going to do it.
He was the first person I talked to. But I've talked to other people about it, just to see if they share the same opinion as him.
But he was good about letting us rent something from him before, so, I mean, and I'm sure.
Well, but yeah, let's just do that then, yeah.
I'm sure that Holt House would let the city rent something from them, and Alan is in charge of letting the guys out there run it to, you know, do it. I'm, I have confidence in Alan. He's not gonna put somebody in a piece of machinery that they are not capable of renting.
Yeah, how, yeah, however we want to do it.
So then, if that's the case, then we don't, we don't need to be, we can just go ahead and give the okay to go rent the prop, go rent the equipment and have it done through this motion.
Right, we, we should have it not to exceed.
Not to exceed, okay.
I would, I mean, if you want, I would say not to exceed five thousand dollars, I think we'd be fine.
Yeah.
And especially if it's a couple days.
All right. So we'll do this, a motion, a discussion and action is necessary, so I need a motion, uh, to rent equipment for, regarding the retention ponds, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Do you have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All right, roll call please.
Walden?
I'm not gonna go on.
We don't abstain. Sorry, abstain.
Smith?
I'll abstain.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burgess?
If something is friendly from Holt House, I need to abstain.
Okay, then yes. She does work for Holt House. And Candy works for GSI. Yeah, so yes. All right, thank you. All right, up next, discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system phase one project that's properly brought to the board.
Pretty well finished up, just some minor little things, uh, as they're, as they can, a little bit of cleanup here and there.
Uh, discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system phase two.
So we are, uh, getting conversation and, and meeting with the utilities there next to the Lee Fun Pump Station, looking at, uh, if we need to do relocation of utilities there or not. Um, you know, kind of getting things laid out. Uh, it sounds like they're gonna, so just like the last project, we televise the old sewers, uh, just to make sure where the taps are, to, you know, figure out where the existing, um, residential or whatnot tap, the service lines come into the mains. I expect they're, they're scheduling, looking to do that, uh, coming up here this, this month, starting to work on it. I don't, I don't expect any actual excavation to really begin until spring though, so they're, they're gonna go through and televise the sewers and then get a plan that, you know, and make sure that our, you know, sewer layout and everything is going to be kosher, and then, uh, then we'll be getting shop drawings for manholes and, you know, they'll, just with delivery of things. I, I expect it'll be, uh, probably spring, you know, uh, before we start seeing something, but I don't know, we'll see. Um, just getting, just getting it started.
All right, discussion and action is necessary on water system improvements, project items is properly brought to the board.
Uh, so the, there, there's, on Samuel Street, there's a water main permit that we're still, we're waiting to obtain, and then there'll be three services, I think there's three, right? Three services, Jack?
Two, the left project.
Yeah, three of them. I couldn't remember if it was three or, um, there's three left to finish there, waiting for that water main. Uh, everybody remembers, there was a two-inch main where we thought there was a four-inch line. The nitrate system, waiting on some electrical and, uh, controls to be finished up, and then we'll be getting that operational. Then we're, we're very close to finishing up that, that project as well, so.
All right, discussion and action is necessary on water system improvements, phase two, the new water plant.
So we've gotten some, uh, uh, response back from the US EPA, and we're waiting on what they're calling their final guidance, um, for basically the paperwork, red tape, uh, you know, the stuff that we're gonna have to turn in. It is a new program, you know, that started, um, you know, the, this is for the grant that, uh, through the Rodney Davis's office, so. Uh, except, they, they expected that to be released sometime in fall. Um, that's, I can't tell you, you know, exactly, you know, how, how, how it's gonna play out, but that's where, that's where we're at with it.
And, uh, discussion and action is necessary on the LaRicheal project is properly brought to the board.
And LaRicheal, I mean, that, that was the final there, um, you know, we were asking for funds back from the state, so, uh, um, you know, I imagine there's a, you know, a couple cleanup, beer, miscells, things. Yet, uh, you know, if there is, I don't know if Jack's got anything to add, but we're, we're, we're ninety-nine point nine percent finished, so.
All right, public comments on non-agenda items.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
What are the chances that we can get speed bumps on Illinois Street, Pride Parks?
Well, we've talked about this before, and it's not really advisable because they could take a chance on tearing up the snowplow, that's one reason. Um, when they're replaced, um, we have worked with Brian to sitting there, you know, to sit, make, sit out there. I know he said he's sat out there for hours.
Correct, which does well when they see a cop car and they slow down. Um, but like, because it's, it's clear till eleven o'clock at night, and we're revving trucks super loud going down there, because, yeah, Jack was on the, it's, it's like, whenever they come down like by Jax and they're like by Salinas, they just start revving and they are going at least forty-five, fifty in front of my house. Um, and like, they're going around the corner because Suzie sees them and they just almost sliding around corners and just, there's like fifteen kids on our street, you know? And it's like, and we don't have a sidewalk, um, a consistent sidewalk for them to be on down the road, so like, they're either walking through people's yards or on the side of the road, you know, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I know we talked about it, just, I mean, through the Streets Committee and it just, and also with Darren, that it just wasn't advisable doing that. I mean, we'll be, uh, I wonder if you, if you could just put up new sign, you know? I mean, I see some of these like, you know, flashing signs, you know, like, something that warns you, not so much that gives you the speed, based on sort of new.
Quite a few people live on the road, so they're on it every day. They know what the speed limit is on the road, but, you know, they just.
Yeah.
There's nothing, because there's no stop signs, that whole thing, and there's really no place that it makes sense to put one, but it's just, it's just because it's such a straight.
Straight shot, but it, and it's like this on First Street.
Yeah, it's on, on Stanley, uh, on Stanley, yeah, but they don't have a park with kids going back and forth at the park.
You're right, you're right. And we do have proper signage there, the state's slow, you know, full of children, and, uh, and it goes down to fifteen.
Correct.
There in front of the park.
And then it's twenty-five the rest of the way.
Twenty-five the rest of the way. No, I mean, we'll, we'll bring it up again, and talk about it, police and, and the streets and.
Yeah.
But, um, they just, you know, and, and we are down a deputy, you know, we're gonna try to get, hopefully get another cop here by the end of, uh, you know, maybe by November, end of November, so that'll kind of, will help too, so, you know, we, we hear your concerns. And we've gotten one notorious feeder already, and we've, we've got it twice.
Yeah, and I.
I can't help it, she doesn't learn the second time.
Yeah.
So, um, but anyways.
It is really bad, I will say, like, summer red, when those kids were going to the park and leaving the park. And she, uh, there was a lot of kids that went to that. She had a good turnout.
Yeah, there really was, it was.
And I went out several times and just kind of walked for the kids, because there was kids on bikes and kids walking and that, and it, it is bad.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of cars up and down that street, and right now, there's a lot of semis up and down this.
The semis don't really, though, they're not.
They're not as bad.
It's, it's the cars.
Yes.
What if we got signage that stated, you know, like, like speed camera? I mean, I know it's, that's very controversial in the suburbs, um.
There's already a dude two houses down that has cameras on the whole street, so, yeah, it's not gonna hurt to put a sign that there's a camera, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, I'm just, I mean, just bringing it up.
And if you need any verification, you'll want to see his cameras.
Yeah, oh, he's real good about that.
Well, you have to talk to Brian, I mean, I don't know what the reality of things like that are, you know, if somebody's constantly speeding and they're on the camera, I.
Yeah, I know, because now it's like the babies are big enough that we walk across the street to dad's.
Yeah, no, I know.
And if they went the speed limit, it's cool, they can stop, but like, I'm trying to wrangle three two-year-olds across the street and, yeah.
I mean, we'll be vigilant in that area for sure. Well, let me say, it's been wonderful being your mayor for the last year, and I think we've come a long ways from where we were, you know, three hundred sixty-five days, so. You guys have all been wonderful, appreciate it. There's nothing else? Do you see a motion to adjourn?
I do have.
Oh, we go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
Is there any chance that you could look into maybe ditching some of this water away off of First Street, Third Street, some of that?
Well, that's gonna, I, I mean, some of, I mean, what, 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 on First Street, I mean.
Millions of dollars and, uh, how many photos?
Because it's off Curry's office.
There, there. That's my street. I had one between my neighbors. And you could see the water running right into his basement.
That was the big storm, that real bad stormy day?
Yeah, I think like the fifth of the month and all this, so. And that's where, that's never the street.
What, what street are you, you're thinking of First and what, the other?
That's the one that's running in the neighbor's basement. And, but see, it was over the street.
Bob, where are you at? First and where?
And, uh.
He said Third.
First and Third. First and Third one match, so what?
That's, uh, First and St. John there, and, you know, that water.
Well, that is part of the second fence.
And, uh, gutter or subs can't take that amount of water that comes down. I mean, you're looking at millions of square feet of solid surface up there, well, from the elevator, you know, down to Fishers, basically. And then, uh, we've got the Methodist Church, a Christian church, and, uh, so there's nowhere for the water to soak in, and it all comes down that way, pretty much levels out on that quarter, and, you know, I.
So, so whenever we.
Basically.
So when we start sewer phase two, they will camera the sewers and, you know, maybe there's blockages or something, and they won't be cleaning the sewers.
No, I don't think there's blockages as much as it just cannot handle.
Can't get it, yeah.
And the water that does go north in that ditch has to make.
That's a pretty good ditch there, isn't it?
What's that?
Where it cuts around his corner right there.
And then it goes down to Billy Blazes.
Yeah, we've been talking, yeah.
Then it switches directions again, then it goes down and then past Candy's house again, instead of just rolling straight out into that field.
Those are some deep ditches too. Those are some deep ditches too. So you would wanna take it straight through like, the Davises or something, like down, down like First Street?
Could, uh. Down the Joe Cotton's.
Yeah.
You know, because you'd have a tubac area there to maybe have a sixteen-inch tile or something like that.
That's a long way.
Only need to go right under the curb because then there'd be fall the rest of the way. And Davidson would be a possibility, but the only thing about that.
There are.
Is you would need a retention pond out there to catch all this water that shoots straight down through here.
Davidson's already has a lot of problems with water and.
Oh, absolutely. But everybody does down in there, I mean.
Yeah.
Phase basement, having, uh, hens, all that, they get clear full. I mean, you almost look at times, hey, be better off to open the basement, wait a minute, cut some of it out, but, uh, it's that bad down there.
Well, we hope that some of the work that's gonna be happening will alleviate some of that, I mean.
Well, that's why, that's why it makes one.
I mean, I mean.
Tile, it, it might help to run that ditch instead of turning the Billy Glazier's corner. Go ahead and put tile down, tear the blacktop. The worst thing about that, without having a break-in, that it'd be washing over the blacktop. And you wouldn't be causing somebody to sign off.
I mean, I think it's, it's just the, it's the only problem that I've ever seen is when we have six inches of rain.
Yeah.
Which is hardly amount of rain we get anymore. It seems like we only get two inches in an hour.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what, what the answer is.
I don't, because we're in the same situation with, yeah, I know. Well, we'll think about it, I mean, I just brought it up.
Yeah, I know, that guy that, uh, Buck Kim Porter's house, he's got sun pump hoses clear out almost to the alley right now. But there's just nowhere ready for that water to go.
All right. All right, thank you. All right, anything else? See a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
You have a second? All right, okay, say aye.